If I can have your attention, we're going to begin. At this time, we have Greg Barmer, who is the First Baptist Church Minister here in Washington, and he's going to lead us to the Word of Prayer.
Would you pray with me, please? Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we are careful to praise You to pause our lives and our business, to praise You for all that You are, to thank You, Lord, as the giver of every great gift in our lives, the giver of life itself. And, Lord, in Your greatness and Your mercy, we ask for Your coming, the power of Your presence, Your Spirit, Lord, resting on this gathering, in this building, Lord, in this meeting, that Your Spirit rests. And in Your coming, Lord, that You bring wisdom and guidance, victory and hope in the future, that You remind us, Lord, of the call to be selfless and courageous, to live with a spiritual fortitude. Lord, bless our leaders, we pray, with meaningful discussion, with strength and courage, to stand for what's right, for what's godly, for what's biblical, to honor You, to honor our county, to honor its citizens in the process. Thank You, Father, for all that You are. Bless, heal, restore, and rest in this place, we pray, in Your great and glorious name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll call our May Board of Commissioners meeting to order, and we'll stand, I'll ask that you stand at this time, and we'll have our pledge, and that will be led by Commissioner Remold.
Please raise the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and I ask that you take your smartphone, cellphone, whatever you want to call it, make sure you put it on off, or make sure that you put it in vibrate mode. Our policy is, if it goes off, it's 50 bucks. You've heard about inflation, so we bumped that fee up now. And that goes for the commissioners, too, and I check and make sure mine's off. At this time, I need to make sure that nobody, none of the commissioners have a conflict of interest in any of the items to be discussed tonight. Hearing none, we'll move to the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Before we do that, I'd like to remove item five under my name to close session this way.
Okay. All right. With the change, this is motion, okay? All right, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda with that one exception, raise your right hand. Thank you. Now, we're down to the items of presentation. Dolores?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have two Beaufort County employees we'd like to acknowledge tonight for their service to Beaufort County. We have Jason Cleary with 15 years of service in our Sheriff's Office. And we also have Ms. Casey Neal with 15 years of service with the Sheriff's Office. I'd also like to acknowledge two other employees that could not be here tonight. We have Tanya Hopkins with the Department of Social Services, who has five years of service, and Jeffrey Everett with our Water Department, who has 15 years of service. So congratulations to them as well.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to have Tiffany Moore to come up, and she's going to give us an update on the opioid settlement strategies.
Good evening, please, how are you?
Good evening, good evening.
Okay, good evening to you all again. My name is Tiffany Moore. I am the coordinator for the Beaufort County 360 Behavioral Health Task Force, and I have with me today the Chair of the Behavioral Health Task Force, Anthony Tyree, and we are here to give you an update on the opioid strategy implementation.
All right, so good evening. Again, my name is Anthony Tyree. I'm the Chair of your Beaufort County Behavioral Health Task Force. What we have here to start out with is just some history of our mission of what the Behavioral Task Force is for the county. So, the mission is to identify and respond to behavioral health needs in Beaufort County based on evidence-based practices and collaborative actions, concentrate first on Beaufort County and work within the region if possible, create a comprehensive prevention campaign that includes, I'm sorry, collaborating, prevention, including criminal justice system interventions, and transitioning over into intervention.
Okay, so today, again, we're going to give you our six-month update on the strategies that we proposed to you when we came before you in September of last year. And just to give you a brief review of those strategies, the first was to provide operational support to continue to maintain the Behavioral Health Task Force collaboration. We also wanted to add two peer support specialists to our community. As we know, that peer support is a evidence-based strategy that is both recommended by the North Carolina Opioid Action Plan, as well is a highlight of many across-the-country conversations regarding opioid settlement. We also wanted to focus our attention on prevention by bringing in an opioid educator who will work with our youth and our adolescents to prevent substance misuse. Again, the premise on this is if they never get started using substances, we don't have to intervene when they do. The fourth proposed strategy is that we reach into our populations who are unserved or underserved. So we wanted to pilot a couple of community projects so that we could actually reach those individuals who are outside of the city limits of Washington. Okay, so as far as the Behavioral Health Task Force, I just wanted to give you some information of the things that we've been doing since we last met. One of the big initiatives that we've taken on is community outreach and education. We are, we have formed a group called Community in Action, and in this event, we go out to the different towns in Washington, again, trying to reach those who don't have access to the primary hub here in Washington. When we go out, basically what we do is we provide free Narcan, we do mental health screenings, we have clinicians on site, both Clearpoint, Gopay, Integrated Family Services. We also want to consider the social determinants of health that affect substance use. So we also have health screenings such as A1C and blood pressure, things like that that people who are underinsured may not have access to, so these are provided free. We've so far gone to Washington, Valens Creek, Bell Haven, and Chaco Winnity. We will do our next event here in Washington again to circle back around. So we'll be out at Seventh Street Park. You can see exactly what we do if you'd like to come out. We also have started a podcast series called Riverfront Talks Substance Matters, and the purpose of this podcast series is to reduce the stigma around people who suffer from substance use disorder and to open the dialogue within the community about what we can do to help these individuals. Again, we have individuals who are professionals that we interview on this podcast. We also take the perspectives of individuals who have their own lived experience. They talk to us about the struggles that they've had with substances such as opioids, which is a primary substance right now, but also they talk to us about the treatment and the support that they found that helped them to get to recovery, with the hopes that they'll influence someone else to take those same steps. We've also been working to form new partnerships. When we came before you last time, we were missing a link. That was law enforcement. So recently, we have been in discussions with both the Sheriff's Office and Washington Police Department, just identify what they're seeing in the streets, to bridge those gaps in service, and to see where we can supplement their efforts. Also, we have been working with Celebrate Recovery. A lot of the individuals that I review for the podcast, that is the one thing that worked for them. Beaufort County has kind of a shortage of support groups for individuals in treatment, so this is one that has been identified as being very successful in continuing that link from treatment to recovery. So we also brought them on board as well.
All right, so as previously presented, we had plans to bring in two peer supports for the county, so we wanted to speak in regards to that. So expanding the peer support infrastructure, some of the challenges that we've met is local training. There are no peer support courses in Beaufort County. But that's not solely because of the county. This is a program that is hosted through UNC, and they have a set number of courses that they allow in the state. So once they meet that number, you have to kind of wait and see if they will add on more numbers to that program. Affordability. So with the training not being local, a lot of times, individuals have to travel, sometimes as far as Raleigh or Durham, and it's a week-long program, it's five days. So paying for the program is one thing, but then you also have to think of housing and meals. So it can get fairly expensive to train someone to become a peer support specialist. However, there's two parts to peer support. There's the peer piece to it, and then it's what we call the RAP, is Wellness Recovery Action Planning. And peers are, peers don't have to have RAP, however, that is something that is highly pushed because it does assist those that are in need to kind of help them plan more in reference to their recovery after treatment. So with that being said, between now and the last time that we were in front of you, Beaufort County has had 14 individuals trained in RAP, and multiple North Carolina peer support specialists trained to work in Beaufort County, meaning we've identified some individuals that live within the county, that know this county, know the individuals that we serve here, and we've been able to have them trained. Now, once they're trained, they have to turn their application into the state, and then from there, depending on the state's turnaround, is when they actually get their active certificate to say that they are a certified peer.
So, again, with the challenges that came with this, by being the coordinator for the collaboration, I do have a substantial network. Again, we're trying to keep these individuals from having to pay $375 for the 40 hours and then another 125 for the 20-hour RAP course that they need to be certified. So we reached out to some of our partners at ECU, who offered to train these individuals in the full course, and at the end of the 40 hours, they were kind of put on hold and put in limbo and said, hey, we're not going to do the RAP training for you. You just have the 40 hours, and we don't know indefinitely when we'll be able to go back and give you the RAP. So another thing that we had to do was to pivot on them, and I reached out to some of our collaborative partners in Dara, in Hyde County, who offered to come and give us this training for free. So all these individuals right here, the 14 individuals who received the RAP training, were all trained for free, as well as the peer support specialists. But again, this was a process because this is communication coming from the individuals who were in training. They had to reach out and let me know, okay, they stopped this process, can you help us? And again, you have people, peer support specialists have lived experience. These are individuals who may not be able to afford to pay $500 for the training and then spend a week in a hotel in Raleigh or Durham or Chapel Hill. So it took a while to get all of this done, just because of, you know, the hardships of the individuals that are involved.
So the next thing that was presented was a... So we have not currently staffed, as of now. The position has been opened, however, we had to wait for the process for Beaufort County individuals to be certified. Correct, yes. But now that we've had some begin to get their certifications back, we have opened up the portal to actually allow them to apply now.
So everything is in place right now, but that was the final step, was actually waiting for the state to certify them.
So moving on to our opioid substance use educator, so there were some delays. Difficulty in hiring is the overall delay there. I think we've had two individuals that were hired, and both of them decided to move on after a day or two of work. So with that, an update on that, though, a position has actually been offered to a candidate at this time, so we're just waiting to hear back.
And actually, we heard back, this person will start next Monday. For the opioid educator, the requirement was just a bachelor's degree.
So the purpose of the health education specialist is planning, implementation, and evaluation of substance misuse, prevention, and intervention here in the county. Also, to help lead public education campaigns, engage in priority populations, youth, adolescents, pregnant women, parents, and families, and to ensure that Beaufort County can see a return on their investment, meaning as you continue to move forward in the fight of opioid use and this whole pandemic, we can start to see some people get on a better side of this. And with that, education's key, and that's the purpose of our opioid substance use educator. Any questions, answer that position before I move on.
Any questions?
Okay, now, as far as the community projects that we wanted to pilot, again, what the purpose of this was, was to reach into those populations of marginalized individuals who don't have access to resources, that can't directly come here and get what a lot of the individuals who live in Washington alone can get. So what we decided to do was put out a request for applications. We used every outlet that we had to make sure the community was aware. We received five applications, and what we did is we submitted those applications to all of the individuals involved with the Behavioral Health Task Force and let them actually make the decision on the two that we would fund. And we decided on two because, of course, we only asked for $10,000 for this, so we wanted to make sure that the funding would be impactful rather than just pre and broadly to say that we did something. So by selecting two, we hoped to be more efficient in the process. Of those applicants, we selected the Boys and Girls Club specifically in Bell Haven. We know that they were shut down briefly during COVID. They have less funding than the Washington Center, so we reached out to them after they submitted their application. They gave us, we let them know that we would have metrics that they would have to submit to us at the end of the year, but every six months, actually, they provided us a list of information they're willing to provide, and we have some of them on the screen in just a second. We also wanted to reach a different organization that isn't spoken about as much. We know there is an intersection between human trafficking and substance use, and specifically opioid use disorder. So Daughters of Worth was our second choice, and they actually serve young ladies and young women who have been human trafficked or sex trafficked, and their actual parent or whoever put them into this industry actually gave them substances to use to form their physical dependency, to keep them from exiting their plan. So Daughters of Worth, again, just like the other, we put it out there to them, we need results, we need to make sure that this is actually having the impact that we wanted to have. They said, no problem. In the next screen, you'll see what, just some of the things that they promised to provide to us as far as metrics.
So the metrics that we will be presenting to the Commissioners Board here are as follows. And this metrics will be for all pilot programs. So percent, the percentage of increase in knowledge among program participants regarding substance misuse and refusal of drugs. The percent increase in improved attitude changes that reflects a healthy emotional wellness. Decreased use of substances, including illicit drugs, marijuana, alcohol, e-vape tobacco products. Improved grade average amongst club members, at least C average or better, which would be for the Boys and Girls Club. And increased participation in triple play, social recreation, and community service projects, meaning get the young individuals active outside of what they may know and get them back into the community. For Daughters of Worth, again, number of individuals with substance use disorder referred to Daughters of Worth for services from recovery court, juvenile justice, or other partnering agencies. The actual number of individuals who receive emergency support services for substance use disorder treatment or overdose, and that number will reflect how many they actually serve here in Beaufort County. Number of screening assessments conducted in the recovery courts, the juvenile justice, and other participating agencies that identify women as both suffering from substance use disorder as victims of human trafficking. Number of individuals referred or transported to detox by Daughters of Worth. Number of young women who report reduced or eliminated substance use. So when we go back to the Boys and Girls Club slide, providing voluntary after-school programs for young people, aiming youth ages six to 15 years old, and utilizing their SMART moves, which is skills, mastery, and resilience training, programs to educate, to educate youth and help members resist drug use, alcohol, tobacco, and premature sexual activity with a focus on substances. That's currently what they're providing now through their SMART program. However, the metrics that they've agreed upon will assist us in kind of honing in on how many substance use individuals we, they may be able to serve or come across and just help to become a resource and point those folks to an actual provider. Daughters of Worth serve girls elementary to high school, and young ladies 18 and 25 who have been identified as marginalized, vulnerable, and at risk due to their experiences with substance use, mental health disorders, and human trafficking. Provide services to victims, survivors of human trafficking and domestic violence located in Beaufort County to find freedom from substances and exit their trafficker and establish a pathway for the victim survivor that is conducive to long-term recovery and success. And again, one of the main things that Daughters of Worth has agreed to do is separate who they will be serving for Beaufort County. So at this time, if there are any questions in regards to treatment, then, you know, I can be, I will try my best to answer those. If there are any questions in regards to the program itself, then Miss Moore is available to answer those.
Commissioners, John, what was the name of the podcast again?
Riverfront Talks Substance Matters.
How do you get to that?
It's available on YouTube. We also have a link to it on Spotify. If you have an iPhone, it's on the Apple Podcasts. And I can send it up to you all.
And when is the Seventh Street Park date?
That is...
Well, that's okay. If you just send us the link to the podcast, if you can just send that date with it, that's fine, okay? Because I know that you want to go.
Your booth came out in Chaco Winnity. It is June 22.
Any other questions from the Commissioners? I'm having trouble remembering your name.
Anthony Tyree.
Anthony.
Yes.
Ed and I were at the recovery court graduation.
Okay.
And I don't know about him, but I was very impressed with the testimony and what some of the results.
There's some great work going on in Beaufort County for those that have been struggling for a long time, so, you know, it was great to have you both there. Our next graduation will be coming up soon. We will publish it, and we hope to have everyone there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work. Okay, we're down to the public comments. Mr. Bruce Gray. Mr. Bruce Gray, is he here? He's their only one, and I do not see our representatives here. I don't see our senator or our representative. Okay, all right, we'll move into items for consent. Yes.
I'd like to remove item number three for discussion.
Okay, item number three we'll remove for further discussion. Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the items for consent with the exception of item number three.
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
And we have a second. And we have a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed. Okay, we're down to the public hearings, uh, and items for decision. Our first one is a petition to name a geographic monument. Josh? Uh, and since this is a public hearing, I will entertain a motion to go into the public hearing.
Go move.
Got a motion to go in, is there a second? Okay, all those in favor of the public hearing, raise your right hand. Thank you. We'll turn it over to you, Josh.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Again, my name is Joshua Hollis, planner with the East Commission. And my agenda item goes over a petition to name a geographic monument. The county was reached out to by the U.S. Board of Geographic Names, which they're responsible for the law, by law, for standardizing geographic names for use by federal government. Um, before they hold any hearing or final decision on the matter, they reach out to several local, local government entities for comments and opinion, primarily the North Carolina Board of Geographic Names and then the local communities or government. And for this one, it was a petition submitted by a Wake County resident, Boyce Hudson, who owns land here in Beaufort County. They submitted a proposal to officially name a small bluff along the north side of the Pamlico River as Blue Bill Hill. The bluff is located west of Cocker Beach and near Mare Point. It's easier to see on the agenda or the proposal packet that's attached, but the coordinates are also up there attached as well. Um, the name refers to blue bill ducks and it reflects the waterfowlers and hunters that have lived on the bluff. There currently exists a sign in the area which already has the same name. Um, as far as our requirement, as far as giving recommendation, there's no requirement on how local government or community develops the recommendation. In our case, we had to publish a notice of public hearing published, you know, it was published in the Washington Daily News on the eighth and the fifteenth, so two consecutive weeks. Letters have also been mailed out to the applicant as well as the landowners in the area and the general vicinity. I made contact with the applicant last week and unless situations have changed, I believe that he would not be able to make this meeting is what he had told me. Um, but I'm here to answer any questions you have about it. And after consideration of any public comments through public hearing or discussion, uh, we recommend that the board vote on whether or not they endorse the proposal. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask me, I can answer them if I can try.
All right, is, nobody signed up for the public comment? Do we have anyone in the room that wants to speak to, uh, the naming? Here's your chance, here's your chance if you're in. Okay. All right, now, questions of, uh, Josh?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Well, I suppose Josh should ask him about this, uh, a week or so ago. I didn't know where this place was. Uh, and I've been going to this place since about 1983 or 1984. It's locally known as Rattlesnake Hill or Rattlesnake Graveyard. Rattlesnake Lane is one of the local little, uh, places that goes by this. It's at Pamlico Beach. To clear one thing up that we need to get cleared up, a bluff comes to the water and then it goes down steeply. This is not a bluff. It's a little hill that's, uh, on the north side away from the water at Pamlico Beach. Uh, as I say, I've never heard it called anything but rattlesnake, whatever. Somebody told me that it, a resident down there told me it's been called Rider Hill, uh, in the past. I've never heard it referred to as Blue Bill, uh, Hill. Uh, I really think, uh, knowing the people of that area, that we don't need to do anything till we consult with the people down there to see what they want to call this. The person from Raleigh has a lot that's a waterfront lot. He doesn't really own any of Blueberry Hill at all. So I, I recommend that we take this back and that we notify the people from the GIS system that live within like a thousand feet of this and hear what they have to say because we've got somebody coming in here from out of the county that suddenly knows what a local name is that's really never been called that unless very recently.
One of, one of the other things that happened today, I got a, I got a telephone call from a person that lived in the area. There, there's been a rumor in Pamlico Beach that we're renaming Chambers Point Road and Chambers Point, which is further west of this area. Uh, but I, I, I agree with, uh, with Hood. I think we should follow up and make sure that everybody is in agreement because once we put the stamp on here, uh, to my knowledge, I don't think there's any turning back, is there? Once, yes, Ed?
Have you, uh, Josh, have you consulted with any of the residents of Pamlico Beach?
We've sent layers out to the parcels as far as whoever owned them within the tax system for that area. Uh, it's about, I think, seven or so different parcels that are along this bluff. Um, we haven't, well, along the, the hill, we haven't had anyone reach back out to us. The only one that I've made contact with is the actual applicant himself. And if y'all would prefer, we could ha, we can kind of handle it the same way that road renaming's are handled within our ordinance, within the E911 ordinance. It mentions that 75% of the persons within that area that own property bordering, in that case it'd be a road, but in this case it'd be the actual hill. They would actually have to have 75% sign off on a petition to rename it or to name it, whatever it might be. Um, we could handle it that way if y'all would prefer and I can let the applicant know that for our, for the board to give recommendation of it, that you would have to get at least 75% of the people that own land along that hill to sign off on it.
Well, yeah, and I can understand the confusion with Chambers Point because Chambers Point, the road, Chambers Point Road begins about 2,000 feet west of Rattlesnake Hill. So, uh, uh, but I, I don't think that we should, you know, it's just, just bad to bring people, let people from out of the county come in and start renaming things for us. I've talked to the people with the USGS who, who, who put names on maps when the USGS was making maps to the actual people who were there doing the work. And most of the time, they would go to country stores and everywhere else and ask people what that stuff was called and put it on a map. And whoever called it, something got it on a map. That's, that's pretty, um, pretty loosey goosey, but that's the way a lot of this stuff has been done.
Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of comments. Um, I would be a little concerned if you, um, arbitrarily took a policy or an ordinance, a, a couple of sentences out of an ordinance that you currently have on road naming to do that. I, I don't think that would be appropriate. In your road naming ordinance, which is a ordinance, it does talk about the 75%. I would be a little concerned if you just arbitrarily pulled that and said, now we're going to apply it to this. Probably not, my recommendation, you probably shouldn't do that. It's arbitrary. Um, I would say to you that, uh, public notice has been made two different, two different times. We spent money advertising that. Um, the planner has also sent information out. Um, obviously there's not been a response publicly to come and speak, uh, but if there's a concern by the board, then simply reply to this petition and say, we don't support it. Um, ultimately, the, the, the function, uh, at the U.S. Board of Geographic Names is going to make the ultimate decision. They're reaching out to you for your comments, yes or no. Um, I guess not to drag this thing out. It sounds like to me the, the majority of the board is not in favor of it. If that's the case, then just reply back to this and say, we're not in favor of it. Um, but we understand it's ultimately the federal government, it's the federal board here, their decision to name it. But I think they'll take into consideration yours. It would just keep it from dragging out.
Well, I, I guess we need to come out of the public hearing and then take action. Is that the best thing to do? Okay. All right, need a motion to come out?
Second.
Okay, and we have a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Now, entertain a motion, uh, if you would like for us to respond back in a specific way.
I move that we not approve this, that we tell them that we prefer it be carry the local names and let them name their stuff.
Okay. Is there a second?
Sorry.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, we're down to, uh, with, thank you, Josh. We're down to the public hearing. And Brad, here again, we did a motion, uh, since we're going into a public hearing, so I'll entertain a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, Brad?
Thank you, Chairman Waters and other members of the county commission. This is a economic development project that we had codenamed, um, Project RX. Um, and today in the public hearing, we're able to reveal the company name is Farm America. They are, um, have approached, their representative developer has approached our office to purchase a 4.5 acre parcel in the, um, Washington Beaufort County Industrial Park. Uh, that parcel ID number is 5668-80-2737. And, um, they have made, um, an offer to purchase that, uh, for $10,000 per acre. Uh, we have, um, done the analysis of the parcel and received a appraisal on the land. And, um, we have determined that as part of an incentive package to the company, we are able to offer to agree to the purchase price that was submitted. Um, that company is, uh, going to create a new, um, 12,000 square foot facility for the company, uh, with adequate parking for their employees. Uh, the company currently operates on Hackney Street and, uh, is interested in a new, modern facility. The developer, uh, in partner with a local broker, Martin Tansky with the Overton Group, have been in our, uh, conversation with our office. The company itself, uh, is investing, um, two million to over $2 million, $2.4 million capital expenditure on this project and will retain 80 new local jobs and plan to add an additional 10 new jobs for this project. Um, the average wages that we've calculated are, uh, about 21% higher than the Beaufort County average. So it, uh, meets the requirements of economic development project, um, and we are recommending approval of that sale. We have notified as part of the, um, requirements of the public hearing, we have made an advertisement for public comment, uh, in the Washington Daily News. Happy to cover anything additional that I might have forgotten?
Brad?
Yes, sir.
Uh, how much, uh, was the appraisal per acre?
Uh, it was $20,000 per acre.
So an incentive is $10,000 per acre?
Yes, sir.
From us, okay.
City of Washington is looking at something like this. City of Washington is also looking at this. I've been in touch with their attorney. Uh, we need to do some work on this offer, this agreement, uh, for purchase and sale of land. There's some things that are missing that need to go on there, so I need to talk to you about that.
Okay.
But there are also.
May 8th is the date of the public hearing, uh, for the city of Washington. Next Monday.
Uh, Brad, before we get too far, is, we didn't have anybody sign up for this public hearing. Uh, is there anyone in the room?
Just real quick, Mr., there's, there's no requirement to sign up. You would take people as they are.
Okay, okay. Is there anyone here that wants to speak, uh, as it relates to Project, uh, RX? All right. Further, Ed?
I don't know if this is appropriate because of the transaction, the business that you're doing, but this is the first time, to my knowledge, since I've been here, that we're, I don't know who we're dealing with, whether we're dealing with the RX or the landowner. Is it appropriate that you can clear it up now in case there's a clawback or something go bad?
Sure, yeah. Um, in, in this instance, Commissioner Booth, the, um, company is not purchasing the land themselves or, or, uh, they're going to pay for the, uh, a developer that they've worked with in a location in Texas is going to be the developer. So he is the one purchasing the land and is going to build the building for them and they are going to lease that from, uh, that individual. And he, he is with Crescent Builders out of Texas.
Not a clawback on this, this particular grant or sale?
Uh, there is if they do not, uh, fulfill the.
Well, who, who, who respond to us? Is it the developer or is it the company, RX?
We've been working, uh, through the developer with the company here locally.
I, I still want to know who, who do we, if something happened, who do we go to?
So the developer who's, who's purchasing the property to build the building, it would be the owner of the property. So if there were an issue, if they did not, and the clawback on this is if they don't start construction within three years and complete what they've said they're going to do, then that would, that would cause the contract to be void and for the property to be returned back to the county or for them to pay the difference in the amount of the appraised value. Cause the appraised value of it was $91,000 and the incentive, they offered 10 per acre. The total's 91 on the appraisal. So the difference is the incentive. So if they don't meet their capital investment, then they would either be required to turn the property back over or pay the difference to get to the, to the appraised value.
So, so, so if you don't make the 10 jobs, we're going to see, if you don't make the 10 jobs, what happens then?
That's great. We'll hold, they'll be held to the 10 jobs as well.
Okay.
John?
I'm motioning to come out of public hearing.
Okay, uh, we got a motion now, a second. All those in favor of coming out of the public hearing, raise your right hand. Okay, the next item is the Project RX Economic Development Initiative.
Well, shouldn't we have some action on this?
Yeah, that's what this is.
Oh, that's in? Oh, that is.
Next one is.
It's, it's kind of two, two phases of it. So the public hearing for the comment. And so now we are asking for, uh, your authorization to allow the county attorney and the county manager to, uh, negotiate the documentation of the sale of the land as part of, uh, the Economic Development Project RX.
Depending on what Washington does?
They will be hand in hand because of the nature of the ownership of them.
I know the attorney said he had some corrections that he wanted to make.
Yes, sir.
Brad, what part of this $10,000 per acre would Washington have responsibility for?
Uh, what's the percentage?
We own 55%, they own 45%. Okay, so they'd be paying 4,500, we'd be paying 55? Well, they're discounting 45% on that.
Well, that's why we're discounting 55%.
Right, okay.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Further discussion, okay, entertain, uh, vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say, um, this is, appreciate, this is our first, uh, economic development public hearing together. Um, I'm just now hitting, I believe I was informed, my one year mark here, uh, mid-May. Uh, so hopefully we will be having many of these over the years, uh, here in Beaufort County. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brad. Okay, we're down to the Health Department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, you should have received a little handout in addition to the agenda abstract. Um, but as you know, I had talked about probably before, probably right as I came into this role, about reaching outside the walls of the Health Department is one of our main goals, something I want to do. And about a week ago, I had a grant come across my email that I think would be a great opportunity to start off the right foot, but I wanted to bring it to your table, uh, to kind of vote for approval to move forward, uh, because grants are a lot of work. And plus, the whole piece of this too, is that outside these four years, that if we were to get the grant, I'd love the support of the commissioners too, as a letter supporting us going for the grant as well. So, um, as you know, some of the roadblocks, you'll see, uh, there's a lot more that are on this handout that I gave you. But specifically focusing in Aurora, we know that with the closing of the medical facility, a lot of individuals out there are left to drive quite a distance, 30 minutes to an hour, depending where you live out there, or they seek their healthcare maybe in Craven County. Um, when we looked up. Um, when we looked up some other data points, estimated annual household income there is about $38,000. 31% of the population is living in poverty. And the big one for us that really makes us wanna go for this community outreach grant would be the provider ratio. So we know the area of Aurora, but one to about 1,962. So if you can think about Beaufort County as a whole, we have, this is something our CHAs have identified every year is our provider rate. Our providers are being held to see lots of individuals that are almost beyond their capacity. If you've ever been into a doctor, if you have a really good one, they'll take more than 15 minutes with you, but they've got clients to see too and lots of people to help. Um, so the goal of what we would love, your approval to, um, go for this grant would be to expand access. And how we would do that is the mobile unit that we purchase, we would take out. We would love to start in Aurora is how we would frame the grant, uh, where we would go maybe twice a month. My fault, this is brainstorming, would be, um, like the first and third Wednesday. When I did reach out to ECU Health, um, prior to them closing, they saw about, um, 600 individuals, a lot of heart health, diabetes, a lot of things that we already currently are having programs to do. The ideal thing would be to, um, build off of that outreach opportunity where we are seeing clients, but partner with other local organizations that also have mobile units. Um, the Food Pantry has mobile units that go out to Aurora, so scheduling that. Um, the Pregnancy Center also has a mobile unit that does care. Uh, ECU Health does their mobile unit, almost being like a food truck rodeo, but a healthcare rodeo, where individuals who are struggling with transportation or other issues could come. They could have healthy food, they could get their blood pressure checked. If blood pressure or their A1Cs are out of whack, um, we also have a health educator that could work specifically with those clients on other days or same day to have their prevention classes that day. Um, it's kind of a ballpark of everything. Is there any questions you guys have for me or things you would like us to see if we proceed with the grant into this?
How much will this incre, excuse me, did I, somebody else?
No, go ahead. Uh, how, how much would this increase the staff in the Health Department?
So our goal, um, we right now have one FNP and we don't wanna take any way from the clients that are currently seeing us. Um, the first six months, if we are awarded it, we would get it in September. My goal would be have, we have a current midwife that would be becoming an FNP. And so we would utilize her because she'd be able to get out in the community, assess more than the midwife, her current status. So we would already have that individual. And then the billing specialists, I've already okayed that with the supervisor there. They would send a billing specialist out there. I would like to hire one nurse, um, that would be responsible for coordinating a lot of the efforts out there as well as being responsible for the outreach areas. And solely that's based upon, a lot of our nurses right now are assigned to like communal disease or family planning or, um, immunization. And if I took away a nurse from our current staff, I'd be decreasing some of our other programs. And then the last thing, I'd love to hire a part-time grant writer because I wanna be able to rely on additional funding outside of just the county, but something to keep this going and also to expand.
And the, when they closed the office down there, uh, East Carolina Medicine had 600 patients total?
Um, I can, yes. The ones that they were managing, I think it was, let me see if I wrote that down. I remember 600 being up there. I think it was specifically they broke it down into the areas that they were seeing, not their total clients. And they broke that down by heart disease and, um, diabetes and their overall health, not just 600.
So where did those patients go?
That I do not know. You mean back then or like right now, where are they seeking their care?
Yeah.
I, I do not know where they're currently seeking their care.
The problem for me with this is increasing the staff. I mean, government just keeps growing, growing and growing and growing.
Well, my goal would be to do it as an alliance worker, which would be a contract worker, not a county employee.
Well, it still increases staff.
I gotcha.
Yeah, Chaka Winery, oops.
Ed?
Uh, Janelle, I, I think, I mean, I think this is a great project. I mean, when you sit down and think about the people in Aurora, they need the same thing that the people on this side of the river needs also. And I would totally support it. Uh, but the question I have, you didn't say how much the grant was for.
Sure, um, so it would be four years and each year $300,000.
If I'm in order, I make a motion to let her pursue the grant.
That sounds good to me.
All right, we have a second. Now, uh, John's got a question.
What was it, question? It was just a comment.
Okay.
Chaka Winery has stopped accepting new patients because of Aurora.
Of the provider rate and where they went to care?
Yeah.
So my goal, obviously, we know there's needs across the entire county. Um, I think with the continued partnership, there's opportunity to, you know, bring that to other locations. I know how Bell Haven has also mentioned a need out there as well. They have the multi-specialty clinic, um, but bringing out a Health Department that they, they come all the way to Washington for their care and some of the sliding fee scales that we are able to offer individuals. So my dream would be to travel to each location with set times where people could, if they couldn't walk or if they needed transportation, it's closer, that kind of thing. But yes, sir.
Jared, excuse me, go ahead.
Jared? Just one quick question. The, the grant, is any money included for personnel?
Yes, yes. So the, the grant would cover the contract workers that if we were approved to hire.
And so, so basically what you're saying is we, we don't have any cost in it?
No, there'd be no cost to the county.
Thank you.
Good. Uh, I didn't understand what John said about Chaka Winery's not accepting patients because of Aurora?
Yes.
I think he was saying that the patients you had mentioned where they have gone, and I'm not sure of, that some of those patients have sought care at Chaka Winery and now that care might be to their max limit of patients.
They're seeing all of that, that's what I thought, okay. All right, Janelle, since you brought up Bell Haven.
Sure.
Make sure in the grant that you talk about.
The other areas.
Hyde County and the numbers, just like you do in Beaufort.
Sure.
Since you would be, that would be part of the service.
Sure.
Okay.
And we actually with our WIC, I don't know if you remember, I guess it was a couple meetings ago, you know, we are now accepting WIC clients too, so there's a, of Hyde County.
Yeah.
So that would be a great opportunity to meet them a little bit closer to where they are too, if the opportunity persists.
Brian?
So, so Ms. Chairman, just wanna be clear with the board. I know there's been concern and we've always, and we've had that conversation about adding personnel. Again, this is a grant opportunity where they would be under contract. So we would not be adding staffing to the county roles. We would hire through the alliance. So when, so when and if the contract, when and if the grant goes away, the contract ends. So we're not left with an employee, a full-time county employee that we're looking to riff or whatever. That's the way we traditionally try to go about these, so that we're not adding county staff. We're doing it under a contract basis.
Stan?
Yeah, um, I guess you'd be using the same facilities already down there, right?
No, sir. So the mobile unit that we have.
Oh, mobile unit, okay.
Now...
Would you set up on the same lot or?
Yes, that would be my goal, would be to have the same location. Again, kinda like that rodeo health fair kind of thing where we all have mobile units. Now, it would always be great to have a building down there, but I know that that's a whole nother level of cost and things.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah.
And there's been some discussion, uh, with a private party coming in and using that building. Um, and whether it comes into fruition or not is another matter. So you would work in conjunction with them, but not to the exclusion of them?
Yes, sir. Um, we'd work very well with, I guess, I don't know the extent of who's, you know, exploring it, but we also have other partnerships down there, churches or things that we could utilize their lots if they weren't willing to, you know, have us in their parking lot or that area down there.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other questions, comments? All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you, Janelle.
Thank you.
Our next item is the Solid Waste Ordinance Update, Wes? And remind me, when he finishes doing that, we'll go up to the, uh, item that was moved.
Can we do that first?
Yeah, you sure can. Uh, that's page 25 in your book, if you would like to turn back. Uh, and good, you had it pulled, so.
Yeah, well.
Go ahead.
This is what, a $50,000 increase in putting windows into the Quonset Hut?
No, sir.
Oh, where at?
For the annex building.
Which, over here?
Yes, sir. We, I presented the contract, uh, it's on here. In August, I presented the, to award the contract to replace the windows in the courthouse annex to AR Chesson.
Yeah.
And at that time, I told you that no additional funds were needed because it's being, because it's being funded out of the, um, annual capital, capital reserve fund. And if you recall, that's where we have approximately $500,000 per year and then we do multiple projects out of that fund. What I failed to remember at that point was that when these funds are set up, each particular line item, there's a dollar amount that's entered in that, which is what the estimated cost is. But I'm not able to move money from line item to line item in that fund as we are in the annual general fund. So I should have presented this budget amendment to you at the time when we awarded the contract. So again, no additional funds are required. Right now, we have, uh, the total fund, um, sums to $575,000 and there are, uh, six projects that were listed. And if you recall, when we started this, I prioritized the projects and we start moving down, completing these. And we move the money around in order to accomplish the projects. So what this is doing is just allocating, uh, additional funds to the courthouse annex project line items so that we can pay the contractor. It will temporarily reduce the line item for the maintenance budget because again, back when that was presented, the maintenance, the, uh, renovation of the maintenance building is the last project that we, we will complete. So I'm trying not to do a change of words. So the funds that are available, we determine what the scope of work is or at that time, we may reassess and we'll talk about the scope of work and, uh, what funds would be needed at that time. So this is just simply moving funds from one line item to another.
Yeah, I understand the pricing that's happened over the last year or two, you know, within the budget process that, that we're talking about, the time span. But to go from, uh, $80,500 to $126,000 to put windows in that particular building seems to me like for the money, it's something we can do without. And I just, you know, I move that we not do this at this time, that we bring this back around to later on.
We've already done that. The projects, the, the windows are in the building. I brought the approval of the contract to the commissioners, uh, two months ago.
You mean the windows have already been installed?
Yes, sir. It, it's just a matter of, of moving it. Again, th, this type of fund requires, uh, commissioner approval to move from one project to another project.
This, this is where the district attorney's office and your office is? Okay.
Yes, sir. There was a rot around the windows, there was water leaking.
Ms. Chairman, it's also historic, it's considered a historic building, so there's extra guidelines we had to go through with the historic commission.
Okay. All right, uh, need a motion since we're spooled?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the budget amendment, raise your right hand. And those opposed? Did you see, the vote was four to three?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Now, are you gonna do the solid waste?
Yes, I'm actually going to introduce it, yes, to start with the, the solid waste ordinance. Again, um, or not again, but I'm going to open because, uh, we realized today that the draft ordinance was not included in the agenda book. Uh, so we apologize for that. That is, that is the question, sir. Wes has copies that he's going to hand out to you. And again, what we would like to do is, um, think about this as a workshop. Because we, we talked about the ordinance previously and there, there were a lot of questions and a lot of comments from the commissioners, uh, but Wes only received comments back from two commissioners. So I'm not sure if, um, if everyone is okay with what was in it or if others were waiting for us to go through in more detail and review it. Uh, so again, the, the solid waste ordinance is a very, um, detailed document. It approaches, uh, or it explains many different aspects of solid waste. So I know recently there's been a lot of, uh, discussion about littering, roadside cleanup and things like that. So we're moving forward with that. But there's some basic things that need to be, uh, agreed upon. So what is included in this document is the text of the, the different items. Where it's talking about definitions, where it's outlining the specific programs. And it does not even mention fees because at the previous meeting, we started getting into the fee discussion and I think focus was a little misplaced at that time because we can't really decide on what fees need to be unless we know what we are fining people for. So we have to have the policies in place to see what is legal, what is not legal, what is allowed, what is not allowed. And then we can have the fee discussion. So that's why nowhere in this document do you see first offense 100, second offense 200 or anything like that. Um, going to, Melissa, if you could pull up the PowerPoint?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just for order, uh, I don't mind workshopping this. I don't mind going to this in detail because I realize that we didn't have the document when I looked at it this weekend. But I really don't wanna vote on this today. I wanna vote on it at the next meeting because we need time to sit down and read this.
I, I agree.
And this is under discussion. This isn't put up for vote. We know that it's not close to being.
Well, the other side of this, I'm anxious to move forward too.
I understand.
Yeah.
And, and again, if we get agreement, then we can move forward and bring it. Um, but Melissa, can you pull up the PowerPoint? Um, what I would like to do is if everyone could go back, can, can read this document, send us comments that you, that you have about it. Or if, I, I would also request if you have no comments, call us, send us an email, send us a text. Uh, let the clerk know, please give us some comment back that says I'm, I'm okay with it, so at least we know that. Um, but what I would like to do is at the meeting next, um, month, so at the June Commissioners Meeting, then we would have a detailed discussion on penalties. Civil penalties versus criminal pen, criminal penalties. So we'll have that discussion with the attorney to make sure that, um, we're moving in the right direction. One thing that I'll throw out that, uh, in our research that we've been looking at, uh, the difference between the civil penalties and the, uh, criminal penalties, one of the, the biggest things, other than you have a criminal record, is where do the fines go? Who gets to use the fines? Or, or, or do you have the fees and the fines in order to do a cleanup? Or do they go into the court system?
Well, they go to the school system under the state law, I believe.
That's right.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's, if it's a criminal offense.
I'm, I'm not, oh, that's right.
If it's a criminal offense, it goes to the school system. If it's a civil penalty and fee, then it can go towards the cleanup of the waste.
But I don't think there's gonna be any great glut of money that comes out of this because after you do one or two enforcement actions, everybody gets the message and you go on your way. So, yeah, but.
You're correct bringing that up.
Um, and, and just as you were thinking and kind of preparing for next month's meeting, that will be when we get into the different tiers, tier one, tier two, tier three. Um, trying to, uh, give people an idea and then if they continue to, uh, not follow the ordinance, then the penalty would, then becomes different. Going through this document, if you would, um, let me just go through a little bit some of the areas and, and ask you, this is a 15-page document. Do you think that, um, one month is enough or do we need to divide it up into two?
One month, enough for me.
Okay, everybody can read and look at that and, and so we can come back now.
I, I, I think the most important thing is for us to review it and comment back within three weeks because it has to be, Katie has to put it in the book. So we have a tendency sometime not to respond and then with the next meeting, we, we have some things we want to change.
Well, I think, I, I think the clerk should be instructed to poll us. If she hasn't heard anything in three weeks, she needs to send an email and say, where are you?
So when you say a work session, are you talking about at our next monthly meeting?
If, if that's needed, it depends on if, if your comments come in and if everyone is in agreement, then I have no problem with that. But if, if Commissioner Dethridge has one comment and Commissioner Walker has the exact opposite comment, Wes and I, we need to present that to you and let you decide, do you want to go east or do you want to go west?
Right, right.
Well, I, I have one question about the document, if I may.
Yes, yes.
Uh, the state law provides... The state law provides that we can pass ordinances to control trash on both the public right of ways and private property. Is that addressed in this document?
When you say that we are allowed to control that, are you talking about going towards the public nuisance angle?
Whichever, I think it is a public nuisance when you do have trash dumping on property. But I mean, the lawyer will have to give us some advice.
Yes, sir. There is some language in here that talks about that. Because there's language that talks about, you know, what you consider trash dumping, someone else may consider storage. So there is language that goes towards that. Specifically, there are specifically appliances, a safety hazard, things like that.
Does this ordinance address abandoned boats under the general statute?
No, we removed that because that was some feedback that we were giving back. So it does not specifically talk about abandoned boats.
I would personally, as a one commissioner, would like, while we're doing this, to address abandoned boats. Because the statute does set up the criteria.
There is criteria for that. Along, it was removed. What about abandoned mobile homes? Would you also like to include that?
At one, maybe you can answer this question since we're getting into this. At one time, there was either a company or a state agency that would roll through and take down abandoned mobile homes. Does that thing still exist? Is there such a thing, or am I in La La Land?
There, there was a program that would do that. But like all other funding in solid waste, it has been greatly reduced. I saw actually a couple of years ago where you could apply for that, but it had very strict requirements. And the counties or the government agencies that were applying for that grant had to have the ordinance that backed it up to say that it was not allowed.
Yeah, to say that abandonment was not allowed.
Right.
Yeah, okay. I don't know, I think we ought to talk about that while we're doing this. We've got a lot of places in the county that there are abandoned mobile homes. When Paul Spruill was here, I think he got that group to come through. And I don't know how many were taken down, but at any rate, they were here.
We can certainly do that. And again, this is set up in different articles within different sections so that you can literally plug and play. You can put in, if you come up with something new, then you can add that into the ordinance.
Well, when you come back next month, could you have some language to that effect? I mean, we can vote it up or down.
Yes, sir. Abandoned water craft, as well as abandoned mobile homes.
Is that water craft that anchor, or possibly sunk?
Some of it's at anchor, according to the statute. It can be abandoned at anchor.
Right, because I think the city's been struggling with abandoned boats. And, no, that's right.
But there's a general statute that addresses.
No, well, there's so many hoops that the city can't get through.
Yeah, we've talked about boats before. And if I remember, the state is, through their jurisdictions, is charged with anything that's out there on that water. That local government can't do anything, is basically what.
I think under this statute, it defines what an abandoned boat is. And it says that the county can do something about it.
Not just in water, but on the land as well.
Well, you know, the problem we have with one of our sites, and there's probably some other spots that I don't know, is if everything's closed, they dump it on somebody's property. And I think that's one of the concerns, is being able to do something about.
On private property, yeah. You know, I'll pass this around to the commissioners. I'd like to get it back. You know, this is the particular property that I'm talking about. There's a bunch of pictures in here, so just thumb it and look at it.
I know you didn't talk, I said you didn't want to address fees. But is enforcement in this at all?
It's not. Not in this particular document. That's the very last page of this. That would be, I think, Article 3 of it.
Because my recollection was, that was the biggest question. How can we enforce it? And if we can't enforce it, we don't need a, we don't need an ordinance?
Well, we need an ordinance. I would disagree with that, only because it helps to define what services the county provides and the manner in which we do it, the solid waste fees, how they are collected. So there's a lot of information that is needed in the ordinance. I believe our previous ordinance was from the early seventies. So a lot of things have changed since then. So I do think updating the ordinance is important. Going to, Commissioner, I believe, you talked as far as the enforcement. That is not, it's very vague language currently in the document where it says, you know, enforcement could be from county sheriff's office, public works, or other designated person. So there's not a specific person that's called out here. So if the county chose to hire an outside firm to do it, if the, if it was an agreement between inner departments, that is, it's vague language so that that could be fluid and it could change. And in this year's budget, I'll go ahead and throw this out. There are expansion items that, again, we talked about an enforcement officer last year. So there's an enforcement officer that's in there. So there are expansion items to, the county is looking to expand the services for enforcement that is listed in this one-year '24 budget.
Oh, yeah.
Our attorney, I mean, you talk about enforcement officer. In North Carolina, it's been a while since I read it. But there's only, the state sits the amount of money that you can charge for picking up, I mean, for littering. Is that correct?
The general statute that when you're driving down the highway and the sign is posted where it has that, that there's a certain fee that's from there?
And any ordinance the county said it can't supersede what the state ordinance said fees are. Am I correct, counselor?
But you're crossing two things here.
No, but what I'm saying is, well, I was, I might be crossing two things. But what I was getting at is this. If we, if we hire a new person, would the enforcement take, would we pick up enough money to pay for that job? That's what I was, that's what I was headed to.
That would depend on what you set the fees and the fines at.
Yeah.
And again, I think that is talking about littering within the right of way. Not on private property.
I got you. Is this on Mac, no, you screwed?
Yes. Any, any other, I think, I think basically you and Brian and David's gonna get together and, based on the conversation, and add some additional language, if you can do that?
Yes, sir, for the mobile homes and the water craft.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Anita?
Mr. Chairman, unfortunately, I did not receive any information from the state today, as I normally would on the first day of the month, for sales tax. And I don't have any other updates for you on the financials. I would share that information with you later this week when I receive that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Brian, before we get involved with your discussion, we're gonna go ahead and take a break. Because I'm not sure that we can get through it that quickly. So we're gonna take a break, and we'll be back shortly.
Oh, yeah.
We're back from our break. The next item is the contract with the North Carolina Department of, what is, Internet Technology or?
Information Technology.
I got you. At Bright, Bright Speed for broadband installation. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is the contract. It's a three-party contract between the North Carolina Department of Information Technology, the county, and Bright Speed. As you're aware, the county and Bright Speed were awarded a great grant to install broadband, specifically fiber to the premises that is scalable at the end of the contract period, 100 by 100 symmetrical. The original agreement that we worked with, the original memorandum of understanding that the board initiated with Bright Speed, you had a couple of, you had a couple of companies that proposed on this. And both of those were submitted, or three of them were actually submitted to the state. Ultimately, this is the grant that was awarded by the state. DIT is the one that evaluated those. They're the ones that did all the work on it. And they're the ones who were awarded it. Under the original memorandum of understanding that the board had, you agreed that you would provide half a million dollars to the project. And Bright Speed initially had estimated that they would serve 1,933 homes at a cost of $6.5 million. After the grant was submitted, DIT went through a protest, protest period where other providers who had area where they were being proposed to put service in, were able to challenge the locations. And out of that, that's why it took so long. As you'll recall, it's been almost, it's been a year or more since we started on this thing. So it took them a while first to get it to speed and then to go through the challenge process. And under that challenge process, they were able, other companies were able to remove locations out of those that were originally proposed. So you'll see in this grant, in this scope of work, the number has actually decreased from 1,933 homes to 1,070 premises. And the contract cost reduced from 5.6 million down a million two to 5.29 million. The grant is set up such that the counties can contribute, but they can't contribute any more than 50% of the match. So out of this 5.29 million dollar project, the state of North Carolina, under the great grant, is providing $4 million. And then the matching amount, which is Bright Speed's amount and the county's amount, is 1.29 million. And of that 1.29, Bright Speed is paying $790,509. And we're committing a half a million dollars. This is out of your ARPA funds. This is not general tax dollars. These are funds that were set aside and sent to you by the federal government for broadband projects. So this is the grant agreement with, it's a third, three-party agreement. It's been reviewed by the county attorney. It's also been reviewed by a contract attorney that the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners hired to look at it, to make sure that all the federal pieces of it were correct. So it's, it's been approved along those lines. And, and this would allow Bright Speed to begin installing fiber to the home in those locations. We have a meeting, we've been trying to schedule a meeting with their leadership so that they could show us. Because they know where these locations are, but they also have some expansion that they're doing themselves. And then they have a third map where they're going to show where those cross over and where they will also provide service to folks that they may pass. So if they're going to a great grant location, and your house was one that wasn't in the great grant, and they passed by you to get to a great grant location, then they've committed to serving those other homes. It just makes sense. They're going by there anyway, and they're committed to serve them. So we're waiting to get that meeting set up with, with the Bright Speed folks. Their GIS folks are working on those maps so that we can actually see those maps. Because it will be more than obviously the numbers that you see here. But this is the official grant. And moves the process forward and lets them start putting fiber in the ground and serving locations in Beaufort County. So we would recommend your approval.
Motion to approve. Got a motion to approve this or a second? Add a second. Discussion. John?
What is the timing that we're being held to on this? Given the fact that we're still waiting for a meeting with them?
So it's a two-year, it's a two-year build for.
No, I meant, till we gotta sign the contract.
Oh, the 15th of this month.
So we've got two weeks.
The state wants the contract back, yes. They're, they're ready to move on. We just got this, we just got this the end of the month, end of last month. And they want it back by the 15th. Our recommendation is to move forward. I understand, I understand Commissioner Reboz is concerned that there was a change. And that's why we talked about that. There has been a decrease in areas that they're serving due to the protest petition. You know, and proportionally, we're still showing our, our half a million dollar grant. But I mean, this is, this is the grant that was awarded. I mean, I guess from our side, if you want to say, no, we don't want to do it, then, then somebody else gets that money.
Well, the problem is that they're the ones that have decided that their share is going down without correspondingly reducing our share.
I mean, I don't disagree.
Bright Speed.
I don't, I don't disagree with you. I think what they're working off of was the original MOU that we had with them that said, we'd commit half a million dollars. Did you have?
Yeah, I do. Well, you know, I know you guys are gonna vote to pass this, but I'm gonna get my negativity in on it. And that is, this whole broadband business was originated in the Obama administration when they realized that they could monitor every citizen of the United States. So the reason the government's putting money into this is so that they can get everyone as connected as they can get them so that they can supervise them. There are sinister aspects to this. Plus, I have a problem when government starts going into business. It's called fascism. When government locks hands with companies and starts funding part of their, part of what they're doing. Third thing is, I have property in one of the places. I looked at the map, they're putting this. Hey, guess what? There's nobody there. That's why that this hasn't been able to fund itself in the past. So we're building, we're building out this stuff in places that there's nobody at, and probably nobody wants it.
Any, any other comments? All right, we have motions, we have a motion on the floor, add a second. All those in favor of signing the contract and move it forward, raise your right hand. Those opposed. All right, the. Yes.
This might not be the best deal that you're gonna get.
You don't even know.
Well, you don't know, but you gotta start somewhere. And if we lose this money, $500,000, I mean, it's already been voted and discussed. But if don't, if don't get one person benefit from it, it'll help somebody.
All right, the next item is to Mr. Richardson, trash dumping.
Well, we've already, I think, covered that. I don't, I don't need to say anything else about it.
All right. Next one is, who signs county contracts?
Yeah, we've got two, two examples of things that have been signed or approvals have been given without them coming before the Board of County Commissioners. And one of those was the signing of the contract in the Register of Deeds office on the fake advertising that you see on TV about, I can steal your land. So, and your house. And guess what? Somebody came by and sold us a program to do that. The manager gave the Register of Deeds the authority to sign that contract. It never came to commissioners. This is a policy item, contracts and commissioners. That's why we are here. The other thing that was signed is the manager signed off on the redo of the stormwater rules without us having a chance to lobby. And we did not know about it. And I would just want to point out to the manager that this board is here for policy. And when you do things like that, you are assuming our authority. And that's not a good thing.
Did you have a comment?
No. I don't recall this happening. That's what I'm saying. I just don't recall this happening.
Did not you give the approval to the Register of Deeds, Mr. Manager, to sign the contract for the fake advertising?
So I would not say it's fake advertising. It was a program that the existing Register of Deeds, who is an elected official, requested. It was underneath, it was beneath the signing authority. The purchasing contract that was awarded, that was approved by this Board of Commissioners allows the county manager or their designee, under contracts, to sign those contracts up to 29999. And anything above that goes to the Board of Commissioners for approval. And then I still sign it. So I'm acting underneath the purchasing policy, and I'm not doing anything wrong. So if there's an issue with that, then you need to adjust the purchasing policy. You haven't even signed off yet on the stormwater stuff because it hadn't come to you, because we're still waiting for the state. It's the model ordinance. It's the same thing. The only change on that was the phosphorus, the phosphate. But, but we're working under policy. And, you know, I get accused of violating policy all the time by people who don't know what they're talking about.
Well, I do know what I'm talking about. That's a policy item. And you should, as the, as the manager, should be able to recognize the difference between policy and normal operating authority. It's normal operating authority when we're buying gasoline or toilet paper or supplies. Yes, those contracts. But these. But these, this was a new item, and it involved a new policy, which you seized upon and set yourself. So yes, I totally disagree.
Yeah, I, I know you would, but you also have to remember that Ms. Whitehurst actually presented this to the board at budget time and talked to y'all about it. And there were no objections at the time. And again, it was underneath the purchasing policy and within the authority of the county manager to sign.
Well, there's a wide range between no objections and an approval. Big difference.
You don't have to approve it, Commissioner Richardson. Under the purchasing policy, the Board of Commissioners has delegated that responsibility up to a certain dollar level to the county manager or their designee. If you don't like that, then get the rest of this board to vote to reduce that number. But we're out, we're operating under policy.
Well, this is just boilerplate. There's a whole lot of difference between, between bureaucrats setting policy and boards of commissioners setting policy, and that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about buying nuts and bolts and toilet paper. We're talking about a change in policy of something that we're doing that is different. And just because something is presented to commissioners and nobody really objects to it, that's not an approval. That's, that's what my third grader would do to me, saying, "Well, you didn't object to it, so I can go out and do this." No, that's, that doesn't work that way. The other item is, we missed the opportunity to lobby the stormwater rules big time. When, when you signed that everything was in order and that you had the authority to sign, that's policy, Mr. Manager. That's not a New York bank wick.
I, I understand that, Commissioner Richardson. And I believe that that was discussed three meetings ago. I don't think this board has taken any action since that time to lobby anybody. So you certainly had that opportunity after you brought it up.
No, Mr. Manager.
Yes, you did.
You signed off on this a year and a half ago, when we were, that were in the infancy of doing this. So you're try, you're trying to take some facts and cover yourself with it, and you, no, it's not cool it. This is a public meeting. And you're interfering with my part of this.
I'll interfere all I want.
Well, interfere all you want to, make yourself look as bad as you want to look. But the public elected commissioners to set policy. We did not hire staff to set policy.
Okay. Have yet to approve that agreement, so you still have the opportunity to do that. You can turn it down.
It's meaningless at this point, it's over with.
Okay. We're good? All right, we're down to the Beaufort County School discussion.
Well, my question about this is, when we met in the strategic planning session, I didn't see anything in the agenda that goes to our meeting. We asked for a special meeting with the, with the school board.
You did, and we actually had that, a specific conversation about whether we needed to put it on the agenda, and this board said, "No, you don't." And I had a conversation on Thursday. You had strategic planning on Wednesday, and I had a conversation on Thursday with the superintendent, and he is trying to work out that meeting. So he did not have to go on this agenda, because this board said it didn't have to go on this agenda.
Well, that's true, but we said we would take it up at this meeting. I'm just asking for, for a progress report. Am I allowed as an elected official to do that? Or do I, do you, do, do I work for you?
I think, I think what Brian has already said is, he's already made contact with the superintendent, and a date has not been set. So we're proceeding.
That's all we did?
Okay.
It was a report.
All right, you want to move to your Confederate Memorial?
Yeah. Go to page 131 in this item. There was a, is a renaming commission in Washington DC, and they're taking some drastic actions and destroying history as best they can. I'll read this resolution that I was asked to present, and what it, what it has to do with is the removal of an important monument that's in Arlington National Cemetery. It's called a House and Senate Resolution to Memorialize the United States Congress to Vote Against Removal of the Confederate Memorial at Arlington National Cemetery. Whereas the Confederate Memorial at Arlington National Cemetery was erected in 1914, whereas the memorial was designed by Moses Ezekiel, a Jewish Confederate veteran, an internationally acclaimed sculptor, who was buried at the base of the statue in 1921. And whereas President William McKinley, a former Union soldier, delivered a speech in 1898 urging the United States government to assume responsibility for the care of the graves of Confederate dead. And whereas President William Howard Taft supported the raising of funds for the memorial by the United Daughters of the Confederacy in 1906. And whereas President Woodrow Wilson unveiled the memorial on June 4th, 1914. Whereas the Commission on Naming of Items of the Department of Defense that commemorate the Confederate States of America, or any person who served voluntarily with the Confederate States of America, commonly referred to as the renaming commission, was created by the United States Congress in 2021 over the veto of President Donald Trump. And whereas the naming commission recommended removal of the memorial with only the granite base remaining. Now therefore be it resolved by both the North Carolina House and Senate that the members of the North Carolina House of Representatives and Senate by resolution memorialize the United States Congress to vote against removal of the Confederate Memorial at Arlington National Cemetery. And we'd like this, if it passes, sent to every House and Senate member in every county.
You making a motion?
That is a motion.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
All right, discussion. If none?
I've got, I've got discussion.
Okay.
Yes, for the last few years, America's been under the thumb of what some people call the woke, established graces of destroying history, taking down monuments, and learning very little in their schools of higher education. You can, you could take a literary test of, of history amongst many people who have graduated from college, and many would not pass. And it's sad, because they're told that they're smarter than they really are. It's my opinion, the more we try to destroy the past and reaffirm what never happened, the more we're going to be in a position where succeeding generations are going to become dumber and dumber and dumber. And they're dumb enough now. They don't need to get any more stupid. So yes, I, I agree, we should never, ever destroy any monuments, take down any history, rewrite history books so that everyone who feels offended or part of this grand victimhood status can say that they did the right thing. And so, yes, I'm a very strong second on this.
Randy?
I'm not for taking down statues, just simply because of the cost involved. I think it's way too much money, and the thing's been there, but I know why it was there and whatnot. But we just had that, where we sat in here, and we talked about, you know, our strategic plans for the future, and at no time did anything ever come up about a monument in Arlington, Virginia. And, but we did learn that we need to stay in our lane. And this is, you know, four hours away. I think it's way out of our lane, it's not our, it's not our fight. So I'm, I'm going to vote against it.
I have a comment to make, so if everybody else has finished.
Stan said something very important. He talked about our history. And one of the things that I see, you hear these guys talking about black history and all they oppose about, about all the things that they don't want to come out to the forefront. Well, I think black history is just as important as, as these monuments are, and people should be talking about the history of the black people. That's what's important to me, not those monuments that y'all are stressing about. It is important that everybody realizes where black people, the plight that they have had, and how they have accomplished so many things. That is far more important than these monuments.
May I report?
Thank you. Yeah. Nobody wants to destroy black history. There's a whole month dedicated to black history, and I think it's very important that everyone know black history. And I, I don't think that should ever be an either or, a zero sum. Now, one has to think about Arlington. A lot of people don't even know that that land was owned by Robert E. Lee, the entire cemetery. And we will have generations, they don't know that house that sits up on the hill was Robert E. Lee's house. If, if you start destroying little pieces of history, eventually you will not know who we were as a people, how black people had suffered through the terror, the terrors of slavery. That, that will be forgotten as well. Destroy history, you destroy the past, and you will destroy young people's ability to become smarter and smarter. If, if you forget what has happened in the past, you will never know how to endure the future and how to make better decisions.
You finally said something that made sense, Stan. I agree with you 100%. We need to know. Now go out there tomorrow and take down your sign against CRT.
Okay, this, this is my final statement.
I don't have a sign on CRT.
After having heard you guys, that is, my heritage is invaluable to me, my ancestors, and future generations, as your heritage is to you, your ancestors and future generations. Each person should be proud of his heritage, whether glamorous, honorable, or of questionable origin. Heritage is a fixed quantity and is, and is usually not alterable. The desecration of heritage, whether the destruction of monuments, the ignorance of the true facts and events, or the deliberate attempt to manipulate the history of events in a, in the long run, leads to more friction among the parties and guarantees there will always be contention. There were many free and enslaved blacks who served in both the Confederate and Union Army. Many of these people were alive when the monument was erected. If our forefathers who lived through the, this tragedy could come together, why cannot their descendants? The monument honors all participants, and there are black soldiers that are honored on the Confederate monument. So it's not a racial thing.
Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor of the resolution, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you. All right, I, we pulled the other one, okay, Commissioner Deathridge at Span government mail providers.
Yeah, I, I really am not being served with our Microsoft 360. I've had a lot of trouble using it. What I would prefer using is a Google, and we can easily do that by just, we can set it up through our, our group, and I can manage and maintain it a whole lot better. Now, if, I think-
You can manage and maintain it personally, your own personal one?
Yeah, well, I would, no, I just manage my email. I don't want to have anything to do with anybody else's email. And I will tell you, guys, I don't know how you feel about it, you may, if you've never used Google, it's about twice as fast. Microsoft 360 is extremely slow. They probably offer a array of services that some people like. Google, and, and I don't like Google any more than Microsoft as a corporation. I really don't. But their email is significantly faster, it is easier to use, and it's a whole lot easier to handle the passwords. I, I want to be able to set my own password and be able to change it whenever I, I want to, without having to go through a lot of steps and a lot of hoops. Understanding that that email is, the URL, well, the address of that email would be my county email address, just through a different service. They would still, we would, all, all of us would still be able to talk, we'd be able to, it's just like sending emails to people outside of the system, just like you do now. So, and I think if other employees want to be part of that, they can. But then again, we're not really classic employees. We're at the top of the food chain, so we should be able to have these decisions made amongst ourselves. And if other employ, if you guys feel that other employees should not have it, fine. I think you should open it up to everybody, see how they like Google.
Well, I, I'll speak personally, I don't have any problems with, with the county email address that I'm using right now with the Microsoft. Does any, anybody else?
Well, I am. I'm having terrific problems with it. Well, you know, we, if you guys don't want to do that, then, you know, use my, my regular email, but I would like to be able to use my county email address.
Use Google for my personal, but I don't see any difference.
I, I, speed is important for-
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that one of, one of the issues is, under the freedom of information, is that we've got to be able to have some kind of an audit trail and be able, when there's a request, be able to pull all of this information.
Absolutely. It would still be able to do that.
Okay. All right.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to respond to that, if you want me to.
Yes.
For us, for the county, Microsoft 365 works really well for our folks. I don't, not heard any complaints about it. I do know there have been some issues with, like Commissioner Deathridge uses, he asks us to use his personal email, Commissioner Richardson asks us to use his personal email. And I'm happy to take the accounts that we have set up on Microsoft 365 and have them forwarded to those two personal emails. That way we will, we'll make sure that we don't miss y'all on something, because I know that's happened in the past where, when we set up, you know, we send groups, when I send something, I send it to commissioners, and it's set up as a group, and includes a hold on you.
Well, let me ask you this question.
So I'm happy to, I'm happy to, to take that email address, and it doesn't change anything on our side. So if you would click on the address on the website, it would automatically forward to, to your personal address. You would still be responsible for maintaining those emails that are public related, and if there was a public records request, you would be responsible for providing those to us.
Well, if there's a public records request, would, would they not be getting the email that I get?
That's not the way it works.
See, that's what I, I want.
Anybody who asks for a public, they could say, "I want to see the last 12 emails that went to the commissioners and, and came back from the commissioners." So we would have to, the, the way we do that now is, we're able to pull that out of our system.
Okay.
But if you're outside the system, then you just need to understand you're responsible for maintaining that. And if it gets asked, we would certainly send that to everybody and say, "Put a hold on your documents," and then provide that to us, so we can provide it to whoever asks for it, because it's required by law.
So, so what the, the situation would be, they would get my personal, my business, or would they just, can they, could you segregate the county email, so the ones that are sent to me, would you give them that?
If we set it up to where it forwards, where your email, where your county email would simply forward to your personal email, or whichever one you want it sent to, then we would have those that came from the county side. But any, any response that you made, because it would not, it would come through your personal email account, or whatever email you were using, because that response would come from outside of the system, you would then be responsible for maintaining those for however long, I think at least seven years, to maintain those under public records in case somebody asks for them. So, I mean, you can certainly do that, you just send them over to the-
So if they ask, so you're saying if they ask specifically for any-
Why don't you take it offline with him? Because the board isn't going to change.
All right, let's, I can do this quickly. So the question is, if they ask specifically for responses to emails, then I would just send them that, responses to emails?
If they ask for specific, if they ask for an email about a specific subject, or something like that, or a date range, then you would be responsible for the emails that you personally have. And that's not all of them, you don't have to give them your whole inbox or out, however. But you just, you've got to maintain and provide for someone, if they ask for it, publicly related emails, discussion, things related to public stuff. You have to do that under public records. So if, if that's, if that's acceptable, I'd be glad, I mean, I can get Charles to set that up tomorrow to where it forwards to both, I know Commissioner Richardson, I use, you use your Embark account, because I think that's your business account, easier to do. So I'm happy to set those up, just automatically forward to those, so that we don't miss anything.
Well-
And you just need, when you reply back, to make sure you somehow keep those, so that if there became a request for them, you could do that.
Well, see, since that is going to be the case, and today is a demarcation point, let's state it publicly that Charles will be involved with the county, and it will, from here on out, those emails will be forwarded to my personal, and I am responsible for all responses back.
If, if there's a public records request, you would need to-
Yes, well, I'm assuming there could be and would be.
There could be, yeah.
So what I would do is set a folder up and put all responses in that folder.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're down-
I have a question. Would we, would the county pay the cost for the second email account for Commissioner Deathridge?
No.
Okay, just to make sure.
Okay, we're down to closed session. David?
A closed session is need, is requested under the attorney-client privilege exception NCGS 143-318A3 to consult with an intern- the Attorney-client Privilege Exception, NCGS 143-318A3, to consult with an attorney employed by the public body in order to preserve attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body.
Need a motion to go into closed session?
Move.
Second? All second. All those, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, we're coming back out of closed session. Need a motion to come out of closed session?
Move.
Second? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. There's no action to be taken.
Motion to adjourn.
We got, we got commissioner comments.
No comment.
Okay. Motion to adjourn? Second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.